Usually has another table, nothing cheap for the camera. Yeah, it's not gonna get all three of us.
I've called a couple of times I've had to go on the weekends with Walmart and stuff like that. So I try to avoid the weekend going.
You got three copies of the agenda?
I just made one for me. I don't know if this one in the pile. I call tonight's meeting of the Dalton Select Board to order. Adam was right here. Adam, do you want to give us an update while you're here so you don't have to stay through the whole meeting?
What do you want to know? What do you want to know?
Just how are things going?
Awesome. All good.
So I know I ordered head walls, right?
Yep.
Are they in the one right size?
No, yeah, they will be.
Yeah.
Yep.
And last I heard is we probably won't go with the GeoGrid.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Did you have enough gravel over here across the way?
Yeah.
Otherwise, we bought more gravel from him last. We paid for those gravel last week, two weeks ago.
Yeah, we had a whole bunch from which gravel, which one are you talking?
It was gravel bought from Beatty.
Yeah, that's where I have it made.
Okay.
Yep.
So you're paying for as you go?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah.
It's the town, but we pay on session, so it's not all at once as we go.
Yeah.
Yep.
And Smith Roads, last I looked at was.
Getting there.
Getting.
It's very close.
Yeah.
Looks good.
Looked good.
Yep.
So are we still doing just basic maintenance on roads or have we started work toward mitigation?
Yeah, once the head wall is coming in, I'll start on the mitigation.
Okay.
But as of right now, we're ditching. Because most of the ditches in the whole entire town are level or higher than the road. That's our biggest problem with the water and creating road damage.
Yeah.
And the head walls are all well and good, but when you have no ditches to direct the water to the head walls.
Right.
So right now ditching.
And then are we replacing culverts?
As needed, if needed, yeah.
Yeah, with the bigger culverts, right?
Yeah, or the same size depending on the area.
Okay.
Depending on the water volume.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then how are you doing in terms of staff and do you have enough to get everything done before winter?
Yep.
And then the other thing is you talked about a trailer.
Correct.
So you want to just summarize it? I know you talked to each of us, but.
Yeah, it's a 20-ton utility equipment trailer for the excavator, roller, backhoe for 2,500 bucks. So we're not having to borrow one. And.
And he's getting it from Sean, so you know it's taken care of.
I'm sorry.
He's getting it from Sean.
Dodge.
Dodge, yeah.
Yeah. I've been looking for a year and you're lucky to find one for around eight grand and it needs a lot of work.
Right, right.
And this one's 2,500. I only need some deck boards.
Well, it's not bad.
No. No, because borrowing one, it's all well and good, but in the middle of the night if something's to happen, now I gotta try to get that person up.
Right.
Dig their trailer out. To come back, get loaded up and then go. This is just hooking on and going.
Now this makes sense.
And you could put the excavator and any equipment like that.
The only one I can is a grader, which I've never seen one really haul, very rare, a grader.
You usually drive that out to the road.
Correct. But the roller you can haul instead of trying to drive that, which takes forever to get to one side of town or the other.
Yeah.
Less shifts, the backhoe, excavator, everything but the grader.
So it sounds like a pretty good deal and it will save time and effort and everything.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's a lot of the times I can't get a trailer, so I can't do what's needed. Because not having it now. Because you, well, you could, but I wouldn't prefer you to drive the excavator from the shop to the other end of town.
Won't be long before you don't have it.
Right, exactly, and the time.
Yeah.
To take.
I make a motion that we approve the purchase of this utility trailer.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and I think Jeanette was going to get everything ready.
Yeah.
Go ahead with the purchase and. Okay. So the staff, the new staff all working out?
Yep. Yep, it's going good.
Equipment running?
Less stress. Maintenance good, less stress.
I'm sorry.
Less stress.
Less stress.
Less.
Less stress.
Correct.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No, well.
It's. Probably the quality of sound, it's just, it's my hearing.
So one of them is starting to come around now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's going good compared to what it's been. It's awesome.
Good.
Yeah.
At least you can focus on the roads because you've got other people dealing with the lawn care and all of that.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other updates we should have?
Not today.
Are you happy with the way things are going? Because I know summers are short here.
Oh, yeah.
And winter is going to come.
Yeah. I took a ride and I'm impressed with some of the work that I've, the road I've been on.
Yeah.
Very good.
So when you do the ditching, do we put rock in there?
Not all.
Not all of them, but some of them? I'm just thinking.
Within town.
I know like going up Mount Agassiz, there's ditching with a lot of rock in it.
Riprap.
Riprap, yeah.
Yep, which we're putting that, we'll be putting that down, but that's in places that already had it.
Okay.
So we're replacing it, we're putting it back to where it was.
Yeah. Do we need it in other places?
Well, I'm sure in time it will, but I can't do everything this year.
Yeah.
You know, money wise, trying to break it up a little bit. Now that there's a ditch established, the water will go to it. Next summer, pick up and hit some of these spots that should need it.
Mm-hmm.
Because once the head walls show up, that's where we're gonna be.
Okay.
And that'll burn the rest of the summer up.
So you feel like we're in good shape?
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
We've already talked to Adam. No, I've had a lot of people that I've never even met come up to me and tell me that they haven't seen them roads look that good in 30 years.
Good.
Whether that's true or not, I don't know.
Yeah.
Trying.
Well, you like your job, you do a good job.
Yep.
Yep.
Not a job.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming in and.
Yeah.
You know, all this going on and all the mitigation, it's nice to have an update and.
No, I would have.
The trailer too.
Yeah. No, I would have came in the last time. I didn't know you guys would want me to.
Yeah. And I know this fall we need to start talking about budget. We talked before, I know you're really busy, but at some point a capital equipment plan, like.
Yep.
How long?
Yeah, we all sit down and come up with something to where the next truck will, when it's coming in.
Right.
Get it scheduled, so it's not two and three years. Because two of them trucks are close together. One's a 16, one's a 17.
Yeah.
There's really no gap. And that's why I've been pushing off a little further because if you were to replace one this year or next year, it's not that far apart from mine.
So think about it, so we can talk about it with a budget and come up with a plan for like the next five to 10 years?
Yep.
And then the things like the backhoe and the excavator and the, those should all last for a while, right?
Oh, yeah, those are at least a purchase anyhow. Within seven years, if it's junk, you trade it out.
Yeah.
Like we did with the backhoe.
Yeah.
Yep, if it's worn out, and if not, then we can buy it, keep it.
Okay. Think about the trucks and.
Yeah.
It'll help me to understand because I don't know the longevity with them.
With what we do most, 10 years is question.
Okay.
They, they work.
So they're coming up, they're both coming up, so we need to start planning.
Yep. They're good now, but. For how much longer?
As you said, they're 16 and 17?
One's a 16 and one's a 17.
15, 2015?
2016.
15 and. And 17.
Correct.
Okay.
And the newest one that I have is a 23.
Okay.
Those three times?
Uh, the 16, 17 is a 55, oh, yeah, the 5,500, mine's a 600.
Okay. And you got the boiler fixed, right?
Yep.
So that's going to work for this winter?
Yeah, that's right, you know.
Yeah, so it's spraying water anymore?
No. No.
That's a good thing.
No, I know I mentioned a couple of times when they were talking about that solar stuff. I said, a couple of times when they talked about it, that they need to look at my fuse, my fuse panel in the shop. Because that's in rough shape. So if they're planning on adding solar, they're probably going to want to upgrade that too.
Okay.
That should have been done a while ago.
Okay.
I remember three, four years ago, one of the breakers kicked and I went in to turn it back on. It looked like 1st of July.
It's not good.
Oh, yeah. Well, when the roof was leaking, Eric actually fixed the roof because it was pushing the chimney over and all the water came in onto the electrical in there at that point. So.
Okay, so you've been talking to them, so they're going to look at the solar panel?
When they came to look at the building for doing the solar that they're.
Okay, because they're getting ready. I mean, they're doing the planning now.
Yeah, no, I told them, I says, you better come in here and take a look at this box. They did.
Because they'll probably put in their own box, so we may have to do that separately.
No, they said they upgrade if they.
They would drop up the grade of the box too, okay.
Yep, because I asked them that. I says, you guys replaced the panel while you do it? And he says, well, only if we have to. I says, well, you might want to take a look at my panel.
Okay. Okay, that's good to know, so we make sure it gets done.
Yep.
Anything else?
No, that I can think of.
Okay.
No.
So I imagine there's a check for the truck in here and Nancy will sign that later this week, so.
Yep. Okay. Yeah, as soon as it's done, I'll grab it and go grab the trailer.
And get it registered.
Yep, yep. And.
Do you plan anything in for you to get a new deck, put a new deck on?
I haven't done that yet.
Okay.
And where it comes to where it's go down to Home Depot, grab a few boards with the card. And replace. I'd like to find a couple M lock.
Put down a post and lumber and you can pick up some good planking.
I thought of that too.
Yeah. Our payers do the one.
I'd, I'll have to call them and see if they'll give me a receipt to hand in to get them paid. I have to open up an account with them.
Yeah.
I'll have to figure that out.
No.
But yeah, I thought of that too. Rough cut.
Yeah, and we've got the town credit card you could use, right?
I don't have a town credit card.
But Jeanette has it.
Oh, okay, then possibly, yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks for the update too.
You're welcome.
Yeah, anything else we should know?
Nope. Not that I know of.
Okay.
Nope.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
You too.
Thank you.
Which? This is not an issue, just sign it if you want to sign that second one. They're all. You see this?
Yeah.
Signing, what I saw. We have a notice of intent to cut timber. Um, this is a request for one month extension on the work on Smith Road due to the delay because of the utilities. Moving utilities.
Mm-hmm.
So I make a motion that we approve the one month. Um.
Oh, second.
Extension. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mine? I think it's just a chair signature. You have a gravel tax warrant? I make a motion that we approve the gravel tax warrant. All in favor?
Aye.
You vote tall?
Yes, that's it, I am sorry.
Thank you. You have a yield tax, timber yield tax? I make a motion that we approve the timber tax warrant.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Well, just so I can sign on.
There are two places to sign. We have the minutes from the working session on Monday, July 21st.
This is for. The non-public. Work session, is that right?
Right.
And that was on to do with the. The hostile thing, is that right?
Yes. And then there was another one.
Well, before I sign that, I am the, uh, I'm going to make a motion to rescind. My emotion on sealing. The hostile. Out of it because that is public knowledge. The other one's okay, but. The hostile one. I'm rescinding my motion on that.
Okay.
And it needs to be public. Because everything was done in public. And I also make a motion that. That it goes on the website and. The price that that it costs the taxpayers. For this investigation along with the, uh. Uh. Special town meeting. Because of what we.
We, we talked about. We talked about the website last.
Wow, will be.
And we don't, I know there's not a, there's not an appropriate place on the website. I don't think it. It's a personnel thing. I don't think it's appropriate to put it on the web page.
It, it was, it was brought out into public right from the get-go. So it's.
That wasn't on the webpage.
It went everywhere, everywhere else, uh. Uh, so that's my motion.
So those minutes there. If we want, we have, we've got the non-public here. I think we sealed them because we had talked about specific names we were redacting. Let me see if they're in here.
Those two little things that. All five minutes to redact. If I sign this, then the, uh, rescinding that motion on one goes away. Can't do it.
No, we would have a separate motion to unseal the minutes. At least that's the action we took. At the last meeting. If we want to unseal them, that will be a separate motion at this meeting. These are the, um. The minutes. I have no. Problem unsealing them except for this part right here, which retains standing.
That's just a part that we talked about. Part that now. Yeah, you can redact that piece. I don't care.
Okay.
They, but, uh. I'm making that motion to. Unseal this. These minutes. With the redaction of. That once, that one phrase that you're talking about.
Okay.
I'll say.
And we, we can have the. Minutes redone with that removed.
Excuse me.
We could have the minutes redone with that removed.
Okay.
In public, okay? So that's non-public number one.
Um, go on that. All in favor on this?
So wait a minute, we've got, we've got.
Oh, we got, okay, I'm sorry.
We need to. For non-public. Minutes number one from July 21st. Tom made a motion to approve the minutes. With. A sentence redacted so that. Right?
Yes.
The phrase.
And to unseal the, those minutes.
That's two separate actions. Let's do it in two. Two motions. Two separate actions. So we're going to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, but we're, we're going to redact that section.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then you want to make a motion to unseal those minutes with the redaction.
Right. Second on that.
I'll set that.
I already did.
Oh, you already did? Okay. So you're seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have non-public. Number two. Motion to approve the non-public. Session number two from July 21st. It was you were right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have, we have the work session. Make a motion that we approve the minutes from the working session.
Well, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have the meeting minutes from July 21st.
I wanna, I would, I'd like to move to table that until next time because my computer is still down. So I didn't have a chance to go through it all.
You want to table it?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a request here. Says, good afternoon, I'm representing my class looking to use the old town hall. Enter the municipal building as a venue. We would like to be able to have liquor. It would be BYOB. I understand there may be conditions, please advise. Um. I know we've got a alcohol ordinance. To think we can override that. But I don't think we have enough information here.
No, and I, I, I'm against it all because.
If you do it for one, you have to do it for all.
Yeah. And it's a, it's a liability. It's on town property. Something happens. You know, that type of thing. And I'm sure you. You could sign things, but there's always loopholes. That's, that's my opinion on it.
Yeah. I mean, we've talked about it and I think it is possible. I can't, I'd have to check on the details. But, um. I mean, I think we. As I recall, when we talked about detail, it would be having. Police coverage and things like that, having a bartender. Um. And I don't know if. Our ordinance pertains to the old town hall or not, because we lease up. We really don't control that.
So probably ought to check the seat and bring the document back on that. Then we can make a better decision.
Yeah, the ordinance is posted in the gym. We could go. Read it. I just, it's been a few months since. Read it. So basically, we review the ordinance and then discuss it again.
Yeah.
And I don't know the date for this one. There was also a, um. Something that came through on the. Website to the. Select board. There's no name attached to it. Because I'm not very happy about the Dalton Country Store selling pipes and bongs. Is that what we want Dalton to be known for? Is someone going to look into that?
Selling what?
Pipes and bongs.
What the heck is that?
Like.
We.
For.
Oh, oh.
Yeah. But I don't think we have, if it's legal for them to sell it, I don't think we have any control over it.
Yeah, we don't have no say so on that. That's, that's a state thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we don't have any local ordinances or anything, so. I don't think we have any control and. I don't think there was a name so that somebody can reply to.
Right.
Okay. And we did get the, um. One of the installments of the highway block grant, so $27,552.44.
Can you say that again, please?
The highway block grant, we got one of the installments. For that, that we get every year, so we budget for it. It's not unan- it's not unanticipated.
Okay.
We know it's coming. So it's $27,000. $552. And 44 cents. That's from the state. We want to go look at that alcohol ordinance now so we know how to respond.
Yeah.
Whether it applies to town nearly.
My ass, would you come up with?
Yeah, it's posted on the gym. It's, it's that it applies to any public place in Dalton. The alcohol ordinance.
What is it?
Hmm?
What is the ordinance?
It's that you can't have the consumption of. Alcoholic beverages in any public place, like highways, roads.
Yeah.
Public buildings, things like that.
So you can't have it for that party? So it's not allowed for that party? That you're talking about, bring your own booze.
Right. My question is, we leased the old town hall, so I don't know if that's considered public or not.
It's still your town property.
So I.
Right.
And we had conversations a year or so ago. That. If the board wanted to, we could make exceptions to that ordinance.
But you're opening up a can of worms if you ever do that. It's not worth it because some you say, well, you allow it for them. Why can't you allow it for us?
Well, and we'd have to set up some parameters if we wanted to do it, but you're saying. For this one, we don't want, okay.
Follow the order, the ordinance.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, today I received the documents for the, um, sale of the property to the beans. Um, from our attorney.
Mm hmm.
So we have two pieces that we need to pull together, one is the cost today. So that goes on the purchase and sale agreement. And then the quitclaim deed needs to be notarized. And Jeanette is a notary, but she's not here tonight, so I suggest that I send them without signatures to the Beans. And I can explain about the water rights too. And then we can look to execute them the next meeting.
Or if they have to have that done, we can go to Whitefield or something like that, have notarized too.
We could, but we'd all have to go there.
Yeah. Because that's, that's up to you, I-
Yeah.
I could go either way. Up to you guys.
Yeah.
Are they okay waiting until the following? If they are, then I don't have a problem with that.
It's been so long, I'm hoping they're okay, if not, then we can
You bet.
address it and
Right.
and move forward each individually going and getting it notarized.
Yeah.
Do we have any update from the Conservation Commission?
No.
And the planning board meets this Wednesday, so has not met since our last meeting. And then regarding the host community agreement, met last week, was it, no, two weeks ago? So we've already talked about that, right?
Yeah.
We talked about it the last meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we also brought up, there is still no minutes out there, those minutes have to be posted. We have had quite a few, and there's, there's none at all.
And so I know that, um, we just got drafts, so I think Paul has that under control now, he's gotten the minutes. Okay. Um, we already talked about Smith Road. We've filed an approve the extension, the one month extension, and Adam provided an update on the mitigation work. See for new business for miscellaneous updates. Um, Jeanette's working on um, file retention, there are RSAs that deal with um, what files need to be retained for how long, and then when they need to be destroyed. So I know she started working on that project. There are some files that she will take care of in her town clerk role, the election files, select board files, she plans to come to the board with them and tell, you know, what the files are, like AP files back, you know, probably more than seven years, and what the state RSAs are. And then we can act on following the RSAs and authorizing destruction. So that's a project that's in process.
I do not want to see them destroyed until we get her report. And there are, there are boxes out there that are marked 2020 or 2021. And that's, that's not far enough back, those shouldn't be there.
I, I know she started looking at files in the vault. I don't know how far she got, what, what's where, so we won't do anything until she gets back from her training.
And who's got, who's got the key to that vault right now?
Jeanette does.
And those, those, uh, all them papers are gonna be left out in the open for some, somebody to mess with. That should not be setting out there like that.
Um.
But I'm gonna check into it and find out, I'm gonna get some, try to get some information on my own as well. But that, I, that's, I think that's a big no-no. And the, and the dates on them, they don't go back far enough.
Well, I don't know, I would have to go and look at the RSAs for document retention.
Well, that's the thing.
There are ones that specifically address that, and I don't know those without looking them up.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't know whether they are or not, I don't know if the labels on the boxes are correct, I don't, I just don't know. Um, we could move the boxes into this meeting room.
No, they have to be locked up, they can't be out in the open like that.
We could, we could do that.
Yeah.
Do we have any other new, new business? Do we have any public comment?
I have one. Amanda Devino, 511 Simons Road. Uh, I was looking through the July 7th meeting notes that were posted on the town's website. And I just had a, a question, because I wasn't there for the meeting, so I apologize for that. Uh, there was a question of legal for guidance on the HCA committee warrant article, and I just wanted to try to understand what the request was for. And I guess the first question would be, are warrant articles reviewed for legality before town meetings?
Yes, but, um, petition warrant articles are put forth the way they're presented.
If they violate any RSAs or legal, is that then nullified, and then the person that presented it notified?
There's usually a conversation if it's binding or not, and I, this one was, would be binding. That was the attorney's determination on that.
Okay, so there has been legal review of that, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So my next question would be, the town had legal representation at the meeting, correct?
At the town meeting, yes, we did.
A special town meeting on January 16th, okay?
Yes.
Um, did the legal representation state any issues with the proposed HCA committee warrant article or the final amended warrant article at that time?
I don't recall anything, no.
Okay. So I'm curious to know why there needs to be more legal discussion on that.
So I don't think we were gonna proceed with more legal discussion.
Okay.
Did you get a copy of it to answer your questions, Tom?
On what?
Just- The HCA warrant article?
And I found it myself.
You found it, okay.
Yeah.
So are you comfortable with it now?
Yeah, I know what it says, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, so there's no, we're not going to legal about it?
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Okay, no other business?
I make motion to go into non-public for personnel.
I'll second that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I don't know enough about why we're going in to, to vote on this, so.
I already, I already stated.
Personnel, okay. So we can go in the other room, and that way it's
Yeah.
easier with the, the setup here. Are you coming back?
Yeah.
Is the meeting over?
We'll come back, at least determine whether to seal the minutes or not, and to adjourn.
Right, the rankings? Oh my God, they were so cute. No? You know?
A moth is a moth.
Let's do a show of the transportation, and then the boards were there, and they started unloading that with our complete chaos, it was scary. I didn't-
They didn't help me, or-
That's, um- That is, that is-
We're not funny. Don't.
No.
No, we're the young ones.
Yeah. Yes.
She'll be till 26.
Okay. I just thought the stuff of that.
Now they like to go on their own, but that's aggressive.
Um, yeah, I'm both for having a small with my bells and some bad things.
I think it's like a dog. Won't do supply.
Shark, little shark.
Was it another girl or a little female?
She's young, how old is she?
Don't remember her names.
Well, it's only Devon.
Well.
She'll be she'll drive me some sounds like that. I feel that sounds. And we don't know. She's like ready, doing this graduation. Got the memory.
Got the internet, I'll tell you.
Which, but I can't just no, such minute this is such a I just didn't think about it. It's like so I don't I don't know, probably it's a long way far. Yeah. I feel this. I'm like in the air, when I'm standing on that map. Yeah. So I don't know, it's such as in the world.
Walking, I'm sorry, it's not on the street.
No, but she wants children. Her parents are sad because it's important. Also, you have one just in the world. Don't not enter that. No, I'm being fine. Is she very drawn? Oh, she's content. She's reading books. She's a kid, you know? And you're like, you mean?
I bet you.
So anyway, she's
All five.
They obviously accept. She's like, I think shots.
Any guy she's sitting with the parrots.
That is and she's being much nicer. Okay, so we're back in public session.
I make motion to steal the minutes of non-public.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay. I make motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's quick night.
Yeah, that's nice.
I can go back for everything you did.
Thank you.
Is it appropriate for someone from the audience to go up and take pictures? Is that no-
Oh, it's tough, I wrote, man.
Oh, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I'll show you the picture of it.
I just wanted to know if it was appropriate for someone to approach the table and take pictures of something that's laying on the table when you're gone.
They were the two, our, right, no, it's
Okay.
That's all. No, I mean, what was it taken, was it these that? I wrote. Hamla, okay.
So, that, uh, those papers, how are we gonna move them in here, how are we gonna pay, deal with that?
Let's move them in here. Put them in, a little wrong too. Okay, so the meeting's over, thank you.
Some of those records? Some of those records are mine, that are amongst that group that I could work on.
Okay, then we need to-
Moving.
So, how do I? Because I don't want to turn this off, because it's recording. It's, it'll do its thing, but how do I close it to people?
You just end the meeting, and it will record where it needs to go.